City Council meeting to order. It's 6:01. Present are Councilmember John Minette, Councilmember Andrew Trichet, our City Clerk Treasurer, James Johnson. Also present is Chris Bacheon, who has graciously volunteered to run our audio session. Thank you. Joining us remotely is Councilperson Carter Frittigan and our Mayor Rick Alfred Chase. I see Mr. Casey with the partner here. We don't see any others. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? No, thank you. Mr. Mayor. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Done for me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Done for me. Thank you.
Our next thing will be the consent agenda, which will consist of the regular meeting minutes of March 31st, the warrants of March 31st, the PR warrant, and the various liquor licenses and vendor permits, special events, and a Carter vendor permit application.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Then I'll second. Okay. Any questions? Comments? Okay. With no question or comments, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Those opposed? Say nay. Okay. Consent agenda is passed.
I think I got to sign this in here.
Our next item is a request to establish two restricted bank accounts. One for the USDA grant funds and the other grant funds. Mr. Mayor.
Kevin, I'd be happy to speak to that if that's okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So Frank Cheney has been doing a lot of work to try and make sure that all of our grant accounting is happening appropriately. In the course of doing that work, it's become clear that we need three -- currently, we have need for three grant-related accounts. One already exists. We have an old account that was called CBDG for funding from the state, and we need a CBDG-dedicated fund in order to receive the funding for the Gardner Park -- Gardner Memorial Park Improvement Grant that we've got coming. That one exists, so all we have to do is make -- I think that's already been done. Frank can enlighten us. It's already been sent on by Frank and Carter. The second one is, in anticipation of USDA funding to support the Causeway project this summer, USDA has a requirement that we have a dedicated fund to receive those committed funds when they come in. And so the recommendation that we're making to council is that we establish -- we ask Jim to open an account that will be dedicated just to receiving and then dispersing those funds out appropriately to the general fund once they've arrived. And then the third would be an account that I'm recommending we open for -- at the moment, I'm not sure what to call it other than all other grants, so that there would be no co-mingling of grant funds when they come in with the general capital -- with the general operating fund, to make sure that if there are funds that are coming in and that are restricted for a particular purpose, those funds are going into an account where we can easily track them and make sure they're being spent appropriately. So I don't think we even need two separate actions here, Kevin, but I'll leave that up to you. It might be cleaner to just do, you know, the establishment of one fund and then a second one. And so I'll let you folks sort out how you'd like to handle that.
Mr. Johnson, which would be easier or better?
Doesn't make sense to me. I don't see a reason why you can't do a motion, but I want to see what they're for.
I would entertain a motion to establish two separate funds. One for USDA grant funds and the other for miscellaneous grant funds yet to be determined. Also move.
I'll second.
Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Earl.
Do you want me to get out or? I just wanted to make sure that the wording is absolute with respect to what we call this restricted -- this restricted guarantee that no monies can be taken out of it other than for the purposes that the grant existed for. I mean, we've gotten into trouble with sinking and whether or not that guarantees us -- does restricted mean really restricted? That's all. And if it doesn't, then we should figure out a different word.
Thank you.
I can speak to that if that's helpful, Kevin.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
Yeah, and I think that's a really good question because of the history we have. The answer is yes. This would be -- these funds would be restricted for only their intended purpose. That's a legal restriction that cannot be subverted even with a council action. So that says it goes to the practice of developing sinking funds that there's been in the past when those funds are committed by the council but not legally restricted by an outside granting entity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Counsel? No. If no other comments or questions, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All of you.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion is passed. Item five is a presentation by Mr. Brian Gray of the Economic Development Coordinator, Newport Downtown Development. Mr. Gray?
Good evening.
Would it be --
Would it be easier for you to grab it? Let me see if I can put this up on the screen. Google Meet is not my forte. Hold on.
Do you see this button on the bottom?
There we go. So I'm showing mine in display mode and that one's in kind of edit mode. I'm not sure what's going on.
Chris, if you go over view, you may be able to -- reading view?
Oh, yeah. There we go. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, we do.
So yes, thank you. I'm Brian Gray. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator for Newport Downtown Development. As you know, we came out with the new master plan a few months ago, and that master plan called for a little over 400 units of housing in downtown Newport. What the plan doesn't necessarily do is specify exactly what type of housing we want. And I got very curious and I'm very analytical, so I did a lot of research, just trying to look at the various types of housing available to the area and obviously what Newport residents can afford. So I really did a lot of homework, put a lot of graphs together, and a lot of stuff that I found was actually very surprising to me. And I'd like to share those findings that I came up with. And again, this is just me, not representing anybody. I've done this to Newport Downtown Development and a few other organizations, and I think they've all found it pretty enlightening. So we'll just jump right into it. So what exactly is affordable housing? Affordable is defined as costing no more than 30% of a household's gross income. That includes your mortgage, your essential -- your taxes, your utilities, all those types of things. That, if you go over that 30%, then you start getting into dollars for those other essential expenses such as health care, education, transportation. So what is the median household income for Orleans County? This graph looks at Vermont as well as Orleans County and breaks it down by owner, renter, and all. So the median household income for homeowners in Orleans County is a little over $76,000. For renters, it's a little over $35,000. And if you combine both of those, it's $66,426. Now that compared to the state as a whole, we are $10,000 to $20,000 less. Homeowners, you know, about $20,000 variance, and renters about $10,000 variance. So there's a very substantial difference in median income in this area versus the average for the state. These graphs right here break down what the household income is by dollars, so it's a little bit hard to see on that graph, but about a third of the households are making less than $25,000. The middle, what I would call the middle, is making between $25,000 and $50,000, and then the top third are making between 50 and over $150,000. So it's broken down pretty close to thirds. So for Orleans County residents, what is affordable? So if you take that median income, that combined number of 66,426, and you take 30% of that, which is what affordable is defined as, and divide it by 12 months, you come up with 1660 per month available for your rent, your mortgage, your utilities, your taxes. So if you look at it from the homeowner's dollars, you get the 76,543 times that 30% over 12 months is a little over $1,900 a month that you have for your housing. And for renters, at that 35,867 rate, they have about $897 per month that they can utilize for their housing. So on average, the cost for utilities, heat, electricity, water, sewer, all those types of things, is about $450 per month. The average property tax in Orleans County is a little over $2,000, $2167, on a home value at $149,000. So based on the homeowner's average overall 1914 per month available for housing, the actual dollars left over for the mortgage itself is that 1914 minus 450 for your utilities and $181 for your taxes leaves you with $1283 a month to apply towards your mortgage. So what does the median income buy you? According to VHFA, a household that 100% of the median income in Orleans County can afford a house price of $228,500. So what's out there? This is a couple of months old. I gathered this data in February, but it's pretty telling. The average sale -- these are actually houses that were sold in the last year and a half or so. The average sale price was $335,000. Median sale price, median being in the middle, was $306,000. Both of those numbers are well over what the median income person could afford from an affordability standpoint. So what's on the market? Again, this was from February, so there was 88 houses on the market in Orleans County. The average asking price was $467,000. 22% of those were at or below the median income affordability, but when you look at those houses, they need a lot of work. So there's going to be a lot of money before anybody could actually move into those types of housing. So what about renters? According to VHFA, the average Orleans County renter making that 35,8 can afford a rent of about 867 per month, including utilities. So this is a look at what the average rentals are in Orleans County. If you look at all the different bedroom types, it's at 897. The average is 897 rent a month, which is pretty close to what they're saying is affordable, which is great. You look at a one-bedroom from $745 to a four-bedroom up to $1,077. So is there a problem here? There is. The problem is there's none available. If you look at these vacancy rates, huge decline from 2010 to 2023. In 2023, had less than 1% vacancy rate in Orleans County for apartments. So do we have a housing and affordability crisis? So if the average affordability of Orleans County homeowners is 228.5 to buy, the current listings are at 467 with only a handful of listings. The average sale price over the last few years is $335,000, and less than 30% of those being at the 228.5 price or below, the average renter can afford 867 per month. Overall rental pricing is 897, so we're close, but there's none available. So I would say yes, we do have a housing and affordability crisis in Orleans County along with most of Vermont in terms of at least a housing crisis. So how can we get out of these problems? Easy, right? We build. Increase housing supply, building more housing units, especially affordable ones. Obviously, more demand that reduces prices. This includes both new construction, repurposing existing buildings. But there's a problem with just building. Market rate housing is expensive. So we've talked to a lot of developers, and the average cost right now to construct a building for rentals or for condos is 300 to 400 per square foot. So from an affordability standpoint, at $300 per square foot, if you build a small 1,000-square-foot apartment, the cost would be $300,000. That would require rents in the neighborhood of $2,000 per month to make that work for the developer. So from an income standpoint, folks in Orleans County, to afford a home that has a $2,000 rent or mortgage requires household income of $90,000. Currently, in Orleans County, less than 30% of the households make more than $90,000 per year. Developers have repeatedly, and I mean every developer we've talked to, has told us that market rate housing does not make economic sense on its own. They're all looking for incentives or grants to make a project feasible. So potential solutions. The obvious one we've been talking about quite a bit is the Tax Increment Financing District. On average, and again, this is just an average, TIF districts can reduce construction costs for developers by 10% to 20% of the total project cost. In a prior example of a $300,000 cost for a 1,000-square-foot apartment, a TIF could reduce that down to $240,000, which makes that unit rent about $1,600 per month, which requires a household income of about $52,000. 62% of Orleans County can afford that according to the numbers. And again, going from 30 to 62, it's better, but it's not for everyone. So another potential solution to help bring construction costs down is removing regulatory barriers. I think Newport's in a really good position from this standpoint. The city is revamping its zoning laws to make development easier. Newport is the designated downtown development -- downtown district, and we are exempt from Act 250 permits at least for a window of time. I think that expires next year, but we're hoping that the state makes that go out further for us. And the state also has a robust brownfield mitigation program, and that is to clean up dirty dirt, and there's plenty of that in the lots that are here in Newport. So other potential solutions: promote mixed income developments, encourage developments that include a mix of market rate and affordable housing units, utilize innovative housing solutions, and Newport Downtown Development has a housing task force, and they're doing exactly this. They're exploring alternative housing models like modular homes, accessory dwelling units, tiny houses, cohousing, all those types of things that don't necessarily require building a big building. So another potential solution is partnering with nonprofits like EverNorth. These are the folks that our developers keep talking about. This is where you're getting into, I would say, non-traditional low-income, moderate-income type financing. EverNorth is a nonprofit organization that serves low- and moderate-income people in Maine, New Hampshire, and Vermont. They're very knowledgeable of local markets and have close connections with local and regional organizations. They have raised and deployed over $1.6 billion in equity capital for affordable housing and built more than 17,000 affordable homes and apartments. They do this, EverNorth does this, by reducing the cost of construction, by procuring equity investors, so they're not paying -- they're buying down the interest rates that the investors receive. They also tap into incentive dollars provided by state and federal programs for low- and moderate-income home construction. So what is the definition of low- and moderate-income households? The definition EverNorth uses on the low side is those households that make less than 60% of the median income. And they say moderate is 80% of the area median income. In the case of Orleans County, qualifications for a single-person household with an income of less than $43,000 qualifies at the 60% level, and income at $57,300 qualifies at the 87% level. So does Newport need more low, moderate-income housing? U.S. Census data indicates that nearly 40% of Orleans County residents would qualify for this program. Nearly 50% of Newport City households would qualify for this program. So half of the residents would be able to live in these types of rental or these housing So I found this graph very interesting. This is a comparison of the supply of apartments that are being subsidized through this type of project-based subsidy divided by the total number of apartments. You know, if you would have asked me, I would have thought Orleans County would be higher than the rest of the state. It comes out that they're lower. They're one of the lowest in the state, 18%. So 18% of the rentals in Orleans County have that type of subsidization where the capital is brought down or bought down early. That compares to 32% in Chittenden County, 29% in Washington County, 26% in Orange, and so on and so forth. So it's one of the lowest in the state in terms of percentage. So what about our aging population? 48% -- 48% of Orleans County homeowners are over 60 years old. That is eye-opening. That one shocked me, and that chart kind of breaks down what age group they're within. 30% of Orleans County residents receive social security income. This is kind of a little interesting chart as well. If you had market rate housing, say that $875 a month, it would take 87% of a person's social security check to pay for their rent. Does it leave much for anything else? So would affordable rentals spur older citizens to move from their single-family home into apartment living? Well, according to Harvard University, they did an analysis, and the number of renters in their early 60s increased by 84% between 2006 and 2016. Additionally, 20% of those homeowners ages 65 to 74 made a transition from owning to renting over that decade. This migration of aging homeowners into renting screws up those single-family homes for new families to move in. What about business owners? Is there a shortage of workforce in Orleans County? And these are questions. I don't have particular stats, but qualifications for low- to moderate-income households allow residents to make up to $27.54 per hour at the 80% level and $26.7 per hour at the 60% level. Would local business be able to utilize a workforce at this pay scale? Would downtown businesses have more good patrons to shop and dine downtown at these pay scales? And again, these are questions, but I believe in talking to different business owners that is kind of in the sweet spot. So affordable housing units can have a significant positive impact on local businesses in several ways. Number one, increased consumer spending. Residents with lower housing costs have more disposable income to spend on goods and services. That's just very basic. If you don't have to spend as much on housing, you've got more to go out to eat and to take in a movie or what have you. Workforce stability. Affordable housing helps provide stable living conditions for workers, reducing turnover and increasing productivity. And property value enhancement. Well-designed and well-managed affordable housing can help stabilize neighborhoods and lead to increased property values over time. So with everything, there's issues, right? So potential issues with affordable housing? Stigma. You know, there's certainly a stigma that comes with this. Affordable housing has a negative perception with some in the community with fears of crime, drugs, and overall feeling of resentment towards the perception that taxpayers are putting the bill. You know, some of the possible solutions is education for sure. Residents need to know what affordable housing is. They need to really understand this is not your old Section 8. This is not a rent subsidy. This is the buy-down of the cost of the building upfront, so your rent's cheaper. Residents need to learn that nearly 40% of Orleans County and 50% of Newport households qualify for this type of housing. And they also just need to know the economic value that this brings to businesses within So other potential issues: perception of rural edge. If -- If any building was built with EverNorth capital funds, rural edge would be the developer, as well as the maintenance folks for those buildings. Public opinion on rural edge is all over the place. Many people appreciate their efforts in providing affordable housing. But what I hear time and time again is there's concerns about transparency and bringing the community involvement early in their planning and engaging the residents in the project to make sure it's well-received. So I think they have an issue with communication. But they certainly, you know, I looked at a couple of their projects up here. They certainly have nice buildings, you know? Compared to some of the privately-owned buildings I've seen around here, these aren't bad. So there's property tax implications with this type of project. In Vermont, the property tax calculation for affordable housing property uses the income approach. There's three different approaches to coming up with value. The income approach kind of devalues the property based on the rents are lower than what you would normally get. They're not market-based rents. So based on those lower rent prices, the value of the building is lower. So the taxable income is less. On average, long-term housing properties in Vermont may pay 30% to 50% less than property taxes compared to market rate. And that all depends on how subsidized those rentals are. I think we're talking mostly in that 30% range. So there are several different ways you can think about reduced property tax. One can assume that the city will receive less tax payments for the property in perpetuity, and knowing the implications or value are gained. One could assume that property tax on a new multimillion-dollar building will raise much more property tax income than the current use of the property, even with a 30% discount. One could assume that the residents living in affordable housing will make up for lost property taxes by increasing the workforce and by having more disposable income to spend in town, thus contributing taxes in other ways. So my conclusion, you know, again, I'm a data-driven guy. My conclusion is, you know, a smart strategy is to utilize all the potential sources of construction cost containment, including permitting reform, TIF, and affordable credits needed to utilize to achieve the housing needs to bring Newport back to its robust vibrant past. And that's what I have. Certainly entertain any questions anybody may have?
I'm good. I appreciate that presentation.
There's a lot of eye-opening things in there. And I'd be happy to follow up with anybody who would like to do that.
Does some of this, or how much of this relies on the state when they figure out the education funding formula?
None of it. It's not looking forward. It's just looking back.
Is it okay if I ask a good question?
Go ahead, Jack.
Laurie Brim, citizen Newport. You may have answered this one towards the end there, Brian, but... So you said that rural edge would be the developer? Are they the only ones that are qualified to be the developer for EverNorth?
With EverNorth, yeah.
Okay. And I think, actually, I think I've heard that, I've just heard about EverNorth in the last couple of years, and I think I had understood that. And it's my...
At least for this area.
Right, for this area. And that may be why we haven't moved forward with them, simply because of the other projects and stuff that maybe rural edge is already doing.
Yes, there's limitations on how many projects they can do at once, and obviously the funding needs to be available as well.
Right. And also, and again, you may have answered this towards the end. It's been my understanding that rural edge actually does not pay but something like 60% of property taxes. And so if we add, I mean, the idea is to build housing and businesses to increase our grand list. But if those properties are only gonna be, you know, 60% or whatever the amount is, and I don't know what that is, I've just heard...
I think you're in the ballpark. It's 60%, 70%.
So I just wonder, you know, that's one question that I have. And the other thing is, the numbers sound great, but I have to tell you, I have friends who are in the 40 to 60 age range, who are, you know, maybe they're divorced women, you know, single. They're 50, 55, and they're earning 20 bucks an hour. And they absolutely cannot afford anything, nothing. They can't get loans. They're barely scraping by to pay $1,000 a month in rent.
So I think you've hit the rub here, right? So there's people in need who need this type of thing. But on the flip side, you're not gonna get the same tax income that you would with a market-rate project. But a market-rate project is not coming in here because people can't afford it. So it's a conundrum. It really is. But I do come back to reduced income taxes are still more than what you're paying than what's being assessed on these empty buildings today.
Ms. Scherrle?
Yes, can I just ask? There was an assumption near the end that if we had these buildings for people to live in, that would do good things for business. But there's an assumption that we've got enough businesses to, A, hire them, and for them to go to.
Oh, that's absolutely right. What I'm hearing from existing businesses are they are having a hard time finding employees now. But as we grow and as we... No one's gonna move a business up here if there's no workforce. So that was one of the conundrums that NED thought about early on. It's like, do we want to develop commercial or do we want to build housing first? And to me, housing has to come first because no business is gonna move up here if there's no workforce.
And there certainly are open jobs that can't be filled because prospective employees can't find housing. That's come up repeatedly.
We hear it all the time from the school, the hospital, local manufacturers. There's just, you know, they hire somebody, they come up, and they look for housing, and they can't find it, and they have to decline the job.
Arizona?
Yeah, I want to say something. So I appreciate this very much for the last year and a half since I've been here. Every chance I get, I squawk about this, okay? And given the turmoil that's going on here, it seems to have gotten lost. And I do have a question, Brian, for you. However, I want you to understand that when you look at this chart, and add a lot of other information as well, our grandkids, our children, are not gonna be able, they're moving away. Because in the long run, how many of you would have bought a $300,000 house or could afford one today? You're in your home, and you're aging in your home because you bought it when it was 100. Okay, so if my child's coming out of college, and his wife is college-educated, and they can't afford coming back here as teachers, okay, to buy a house here, you're losing your young people. And those of us that have lived here all our life would like to have our grandchildren around. Okay, so I appreciate that very much. Laurie, 60% of something is more than 10% of nothing. Honestly, honestly. The question I have for you is, did you come up any... Two questions, actually. One question, one request. Did you come up with any reason why we're the lowest percentage of assisted... Because I would, no, it's not enough units, or people don't apply?
It's a percentage basis. So I know there's only two or three big landlords, and I don't know how interested they are in doing that.
You wanna come do this at my planning committee meeting?
No, I'm doing it with a rotary. I'm doing it with a couple of a cokes. So if you have a need, let me know.
I'll throw you an email.
That sounds good.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is an update on our task forces. We'll start with the water and sewer.
Okay, well, we met again last week. We're meeting again this coming week. We have, I think we're in the process of refining our list of questions and tasks. We have one person who knows a lot about running water districts and water systems. And I think we're going to be relying pretty heavily on his analysis. He has a long list of questions. He's going to be meeting with Tom later this week. We're also looking back at the, for lack of a better term, legal underpinnings of the water and sewer ordinances. And what they actually require in terms of accounting and how income and expenses are to be divided between the general fund and the dedicated funds. We're kind of looking at that from scratch. So that's pretty much where we are.
Thank you. Carter, putting in. Would you give us a bit of financials?
Can I just do a quick sound check? Can everybody hear me all right? Where's your background noise that I need to tell to be quiet? Let me know. So second task force meeting for financial practices and policies was good. We had an amazing guest speaker, Cynthia Stoddard, who is with New England Municipal Resource Center. And she gave us an extensive rundown, also just highlighting what Jim and Stacy do in the office below our doll's feet, not my feet. But all that they're managing through this program is impressive. But also, a huge takeaway is from meeting with NEMREX, which stands for Resource Center, was how they support municipalities and what's out there. And so how we can actually use their software, maybe a little bit. But also, kind of found the basic caveat of that meeting was that there is not a cash flow report that we want to really use to analyze, you know, money coming in and out of the city for the next time being. So usually, municipality, for the most part, this provision is used in most municipalities in Vermont. But for larger municipalities, there is an exit analysis, essentially. So we are trying to troubleshoot. But now, I'm, Jim and Stacy are working hard and trying to create a high-level cash flow report. That's mainly what we're looking at. So from that as well, we may be able to work remotely and get some financial support because one of the resources that NEMREX provides is basically financial support when there is a vacancy in a municipality. So we're looking into that, seeing what that could, if that could be helpful for us right now at this time, since we do not have a chief manager nor a financial officer, admin. So those are some things we're still leaning in.
Thank you. And the next item is comments by the public. I believe we have one speaker signed up here.
Not necessary.
No? Okay. Then on to new business. Mr. Johnson?
None. Thank you.
No?
None.
Carter?
None tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to give a couple of quick reports on some meetings I've had and intend to have this coming week. I met with our commercial lender at the Sunsec Bank last week. And both the task forces have had this report, so I'll just say it here as well. We have the potential for an immediate cash flow concern. And one of the reasons that we've asked Jim and Stacy, along with Hal Rottenberg from the finance committee, to try and do some work today and tomorrow for us on cash flow is so we can see exactly whether we're gonna have a problem, and if so, when. One of the challenges we have is that I, at least, was working under the mistaken impression that our $2.8 million line of credit still had $1 million against which we could borrow, if necessary, over the next few weeks or two or three months until the end of the fiscal year to manage cash flow. And we don't, in fact, have access to that. And without trying to rehearse the detail, I'll just say that it's because of the kind of revolving, the kind of loan funded is its cash flow. It's a line of credit, but it's not a revolving line of credit. So even though we've paid down the balance from a high of $2.4 million down to about $1.45 million, we then re-borrowed another $350,000. And if you, and the way the line of credit works is the maximum we can borrow in a year is $2.8 million. And that means we've now borrowed $2.4 plus the additional $350,000 that we just did recently. So even though we only show a $1.8 million liability on that line of credit, we only have $50,000 left against which we can borrow, or that's available to us to borrow. So that was pretty disturbing news. And all of us are working on thinking about what to do next about that. And I'll just say that I have a meeting lined up on Wednesday morning for several of us to attend with the auditors. Not because we think they're going to tell us, you know, what their analysis is. That's not really their job. All we're asking them to do is to help us make sure that we are understanding the full implications of the auditor's report, since I, at least, am not particularly practiced at reading auditor's reports, and I think I'm probably not the only one. So we have a meeting at 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday morning for that. And a second meeting with the Vermont Bond Bank to learn about what products are available and what the requirements are for looking for potential solutions to our cash needs, probably longer term through them. So we have those two meetings, and we're just trying to gather information as quickly as we can. So I feel good about the people who are working on these challenges. And I feel great about the level of transparency that we've had about what the challenges are. And we will report back to the council at our meeting in two weeks. And I suspect at that point, we'll have some initial ideas about what the next steps will be.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson? Nothing. Okay. Old business.
Thank you.
Carter?
None tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
As the next regular meeting scheduled for May 21st?
I think that's supposed to be here. It's the beginning of April now.
You're right. Just my calendars. I believe it would be April 21st.
Correct.
That's right. Your mayor was hired, clearly, when he was...
That's okay, and I just read what's written. So our next regular meeting will be April 21st, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council room. And that is Easter Monday.
I'll make that motion.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, April 21st. And the last thing is I would entertain a motion to adjourn at... What time is it?
48.
6:48 p.m.
So move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.